I also think they know what their time in the fights that might be one of all. One of my fears here. Yeah. Okay.
Sure, yeah. It's fine, yeah, I think it should work out. Okay. It's a little bit of a break, you have a little second call.
Okay.
Thank you. I know that.
Okay, through the chair, whenever the commission is ready, we are ready to get started.
Terrific, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the February 18th, 2020 meeting of the San Carlos Planning Commission to order. We will start with a pledge of allegiance to our great flag and country. I invite everyone to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. Lisa, can we please have the Commissioner roll call?
Commissioner Roof?
Present.
Commissioner Garvey?
Present.
Commissioner Bradley?
Here.
Vice Chair Yakapony?
Here.
And Chair Dugan.
Here.
If you'd like to speak on any matter this evening, please fill out a speaker form found on the table in the back corner and hand it in to us. All speakers must come forward to the microphone for the benefit of everyone who may view the recording of tonight's proceedings. We will now open up the floor for general public comment for any items not on tonight's agenda. Does anyone wish to speak at this time on a matter not on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we will move on to approval of the minutes of our meeting of January 21, 2020. Commissioners, any questions or comments on those meetings, on those minutes?
I move that the minutes be approved as written.
I do have a comment.
Okay.
The, just a couple of nits. I noticed under 626 Walnut Street, we've shifted from referring to the commissioners as commissioners and using their full name, and that is a little confusing with everyone else whose full name is used, so I would like to have that switched back to our normal format of just saying Commissioner and the last name. And I also note my name is misspelled throughout 626 Walnut, so if that could be fixed, I'd appreciate it.
We can make that correction, those corrections.
Okay. And then on packet page 10, I'm at the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7th paragraph down, it's me talking, and the last sentence, he noted they studied the opposing windows to make sure new windows would be aligned, perhaps. It says would like align, so I think that's just a typo there, that could be cleaned up. And unless there's anything else, I will second the movement that's on the table to approve these minutes. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yakapony?
Yes.
And Chair Dugan.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to public hearing, we have one matter before us this evening. We will first hear from staff and allow them to give us their recommendation, then we will open it up for public comment. And then finally, we'll deliberate as a commission and make a decision. Staff, would you like to present your proposal regarding?
Yes, this evening, we're going to be having a presentation done by the city attorney's office, so if Jeremy could come forward and introduce himself, and then he will present you the presentation, I'll pull that up just a minute.
Thanks. I'm Jeremy Kirschner, I'm the deputy city attorney, so it's good to meet everybody. So, the proposed ordinance in front of you, it involves construction time limits, and so currently, there is no San Carlos ordinance that addresses construction time limits in any way. San Carlos currently relies on California Building Code, which states that building permits remain valid so long as there is an inspection every 180 days. The building official does have discretion to cancel a building permit, however, that would lead to incomplete construction, so it's somewhat of an impractical tool to ensure that construction is completed in a timely manner. So, why the change? So, after speaking with the city building official, he said that most minor home renovations are done within a year. Most major home renovations, including the addition of a floor, or just building a house from scratch, takes two years max. However, there have been some notable outliers in the past few years, and some building permits have been open for over five years at this point. So, when building permits are open long-term, it can lead to less parking for residents, obviously noise, traffic interruptions, heavy construction equipment can damage city roads, so there are some consequences. However, obviously, we need new construction because we want more jobs, we want more housing, and we want more parking. So, a proposed solution is to set a clear time limit for construction projects, and this model uses the value of the construction project to give a time limit. So, this is modeled after all of the cities you see in front of you, except Atherton, which uses the square footage to determine how much time is available before construction permit ends. Also, most of these ordinances were adopted many years ago and have much lower figures, so these are adjusted to account for increased costs of construction. So, if, let's say, a project is coming up on the 30-month period, and it's a $5 million to $10 million project, the owner of the property can apply for an extension of their permit for the costs that you see in front of you, and there is a right to an extension as long as the property owner applies 30 days before the construction permit was set to expire. Additionally, the city manager has some flexibility, because, let's say, something happens that's outside of the property owner's control, such as a strike or a natural disaster, we don't want to punish the property owner and have them pay for a costly extension when the delay is not their fault. So, additionally, to really light a fire under those seeking construction permits and trying to finish projects, there are proposed penalties. These are modeled directly after Atherton's, which passed in 2019, and so for the first 30 days after the expiration of a permit, there will be no penalty. However, as soon as that 30-day grace period is over, the penalties will accrue at $200 per day, and they will increase to $1,000 per day. Atherton currently caps penalties at $250,000, however, there's discussion in the town to end the cap, because apparently, it is being abused, and it is not a big enough deterrent. So, if you are hit with a penalty or denied an extension, that doesn't mean that your project is dead in the water. You can apply for an appeal, and you have to put down a deposit in the full amount of the penalty or extension fee that's due, and an appeals fee, and then a committee will hear your appeal and decide whether you should be penalized or be granted the extension or not. And that's it. It's a relatively short ordinance.
All right, thank you, Jeremy, appreciate that. Commissioners, questions of staff?
I have a question about the start. I think the timing as written here would be when the permit is pulled, but sometimes you would apply for a permit and in advance, and then the work wouldn't actually commence for some period of time after that, so that would eat into the time windows. I wonder if it's really necessary to have the timer start when the permit's pulled versus perhaps when the work commences.
Okay. That's a reasonable suggestion.
I would support that comment.
Can you say what do the other cities that were looked at do?
As far as when the time starts, I don't believe that any of them have a clear starting point. I think it is when the permit is pulled, generally.
I'm sure that's the easiest date to have, because that's part of the record. When the work commences, it's probably a little bit harder to establish.
Right.
Yeah, I think that was from, I like the idea of matching the start of the disruption with a finite period to get on and get it over with, makes complete sense, but I can also see, you know, if you were to pull a permit, you have a lot of incentive to get it going and get it done as well, so I would actually stay, for my part, would stay with the, when you pull the permit, great, don't pull the permit until you're ready to go, pay your fees and get on with the project, and that way, in the public record, there's a very clear start date, rather than having a debate, you know, well, it's 30 days or 60 days, or we really didn't start, or, well, we were mobilizing, but, you know, you didn't come and inspect, whatever the circumstances are. So, or maybe put differently, flexible, but would want some very, very explicit guidelines, if not when pulled, what constitutes the start of the clock?
Is there a clear date that's closer to construction that the applicant has to cycle with staff on, or anything like that? Because I am aware of, I mean, there are circumstances where you pull a permit and your GC's still finalizing bids, and there can be a long delay before, you know, that's somewhat out of the applicant's control. Obviously, they control their contractor, but, you know, I think the problem, everything like this, you know, I would encourage us to focus, what problem are we trying to solve? And the problem we're trying to solve is impact on neighbors, and I'm not aware of any impact before construction starts. So, if there is a date that is easily discernible without additional staff time, that's closer to the actual impact on neighbor date, it'd be better to start it then, in my opinion. Is there such a date that are we aware of?
I don't know that there's a natural date, other than when the permit is pulled, but...
I'm just, I'm an observer tonight, but I, thank you, Jeremy. The only other date I can think of might be when someone, the date that someone calls for their first inspection on the building card, because that generally, construction has commenced, they've called in for their first one, but that gets, that kind of creates a situation where someone might be able to manipulate that timing, I'm not going to call for my first inspection until a day further out in the future, just to try and get an extra time, but that's the only thing I can think of. We could, you know, you could put a date that's 30 days after the permit, or just like, okay, we're going to give you a 30-day grace period to start, the clock starts at 30 days, there's some techniques like that that we could try to employ in drafting a final version of this.
Okay, thank you. If I could just get a better understanding of how these penalties work, because it looked like the, the permit expires after a period of time, but then you can reapply?
Yes.
For an extension, so when do the penalties come in? When your final, final extension has run?
Your...
Or if you forget to file 30 days ahead of time, the penalties kick in?
It can be both.
Okay.
So, as soon as your last extension is over, you have 30 days to complete your project without any penalties. Or if you forgot to apply for an extension, and there are less than 30 days before your permit expires, then penalties will accrue if you do not finish within those 30 days.
Okay. And if you're, if you don't apply for the extension in that 30-day prior to the expiration window, I mean, you can still apply for the extension, but you're accruing penalties, that's the idea?
The way the ordinance is written now, it is a strict 30-day in advanced window, but that is something that can be adjusted.
I mean, so what actually happens? Someone apply is, for the, they forget to apply for the extension today under our current regime, what happens? I mean, we don't stop their project, I assume?
No, but their permit would expire under this ordinance, and then they could appeal not being granted an extension.
I see. And then, but what, what do we actually do? I mean, are they generally, you know, hey, you didn't get this in in time, so get it in now, and then it gets approved? Is that what we generally do?
Well, realistically, if a project is partially completed, we probably don't want it to stay in a state of partial completion, so reapplication for a permit would be an option.
Okay. Do we have someone from the building department here to speak on kind of the details of what's currently happening? And...
Mr. Valley is out of town this week, and because this is a study session, we thought we could get some input from the commissioner, very good questions tonight, but because you're not, you're not recommending an approval like a traditional planning commission item, you're providing us with input.
Sure. Okay. And have you guys cycled with the building department, or is this...
Yes, I discussed with the building official the estimated completion times for minor projects and major renovations, and then the longest permits currently open, or, sorry, the permits that have been open longest, and that allowed us to form some kind of a timeline for what would be fair based on the value of the project. So, the building department was conferred with.
Okay.
I would guess these extensions will be pretty closely tracked, because for the first one, it's only $2,000, the second one is three, and the third one is four, so for a total of nine grand, you can get a six-month extension if you're applying in a timely manner.
That's correct. Yeah.
Which is not a lot of money, given the scope or size of many projects.
Right, it's not a lot of money, depending on how large your project is.
I hear you, okay.
Which brings up a thought I had, which is that the fines aren't really proportional to the, to the size of the project, and so for a homeowner with a bathroom remodel that gets drawn out, this is pretty onerous, to me, but for a, but for a $10 million development that's impacting the whole neighborhood, this doesn't seem very substantial. So, perhaps a, you have to have a more, a bigger table, but with something that's proportional to the, to the, to the value of the project?
Sure.
Would seem to me to be more appropriate.
Absolutely seems reasonable.
I have a question about the thought on the appeals process, and I'm looking in packet page 17, under appeals, and it says that there's a committee, understand the committee that proposed, city building official, community development director and public works director, and consider any evidence provided by the property owner or his or her agents in determination of the appeal. Was there consideration given to also inviting and noticing the appeals process and opening it up to public input?
It has not thus far been considered, but that is absolutely something we can add into it.
So, my, good, thank you. My thought was, and again, I'm reflecting on some of the comments we've heard in, for example, looking at the Walnut project, that the community wants a voice in encouraging the project to move along, and, you know, the level of disruption, the degree of cooperation between the project owner and developer and the community, would seem to me, the commission, this review committee should take that, should be aware of those sentiments and bring those in. So, I would suggest that making an explicit part of the review, a public comment would be useful.
Okay, sure.
I would just add my support to Commissioner Roof's observation that the penalty should scale with the, with the value of the project. I just think...
fair based on the value of the project. So, uh, the building department was conferred with.
Okay.
I would guess these extensions will be pretty closely tracked, because for the first one, it's only $2,000, the second one is three, and the third one is four. So for a total of nine grand, you can get a six-month extension if you're applying in a timely manner.
That's correct. Yeah.
Which is not a lot of money, given the scope or size of many projects.
Right, it's not a lot of money, depending on how large your project is.
I hear you, okay.
Which brings up a thought I had, which is that the, um, the fines aren't really proportional to the, um, to the size of the project. And so for a homeowner with a, um, a bathroom remodel that gets drawn out, uh, this is pretty onerous, to me.
Sure.
Uh, but for a, uh, but for a, uh, $10 million development that's impacting the whole neighborhood, uh, it, this doesn't seem very substantial. So, uh, perhaps a, um, you have to have a more, a bigger table, but, uh, with something that's proportional to the, um, to the, um, to the value of the project.
Sure.
Would seem to me to be more appropriate.
Absolutely seems reasonable.
I have a question about the thought on the appeals process. And I'm looking in, uh, packet, page 17, under appeals, and it says that there's a committee, understand the committee, that's proposed, uh, city building official, community development director and public works director, um, and consider any evidence provided by the property owner, um, or his or her agents in determination of the appeal. Was there consideration given to also inviting and noticing the appeals process and opening it up to public input?
It has not thus far been considered, but that is absolutely something we can add into it.
So my, uh, good, thank you. My thought was, um, and again, I'm reflecting on some of the comments we've heard, um, in, for example, looking at the Walnut project, that, um, the community wants a voice in encouraging the project to move along, and, you know, the level of disruption, the, the degree of cooperation between the project owner and developer and the community, would seem to me, the commission, this review committee should take that, should be aware of those sentiments and bring those in. So I would suggest that making an explicit, um, part of the review, a public comment would be useful.
Okay, sure.
I would just, um, add my support to Commissioner Roof's, uh, observation that the, um, penalty should scale with the, uh, with the value of the project. I just think, um, and I guess what I would benefit from is, again, you know, everything like this, you want to make sure you're solving the actual problem, not, not adding new stuff that isn't actually solving a problem. So as I understand it, the problem is the great concern about that Cherry Street project. I think that, you know, we've all heard plenty about that one, and that one has been quite unreasonable. Are residential projects a problem? Has that, you know, do we have a lot of them that are late? And if so, have they been impacting neighbors in a way that generates complaints?
Uh, according to the city building official, it is extremely rare for any of these projects to go past, uh, like I said, for a minor renovation over a year, for a major renovation over two years. So, uh, that does not appear to be a residential problem.
Okay, and then how does the, so we're assuming, I guess, that a major renovation costs over a million dollars? I mean, because that's, that's the only way you get two years under this.
Right. That, uh, sorry, that is the scale from 1 to 2.5 million? Or sorry?
Yeah, between 1 and 5 million, you get
105 million.
24 months.
So that would be major renovation or building a new house?
Got it.
Generally, that's, that's what we would estimate would fall under.
And I think it is still possible to get a major renovation done for less than a million dollars, I think. So, that's just an observation. We've already, you know, decided that up to two years, it might take up to two years, and, you know, the scale doesn't, doesn't accommodate that. Just an observation. The, um, given that it's exceedingly rare for residential projects to go over the time limits, is this, um, was any thought giving, given to have this only apply to commercial projects?
Uh, that was not considered thus far, but we can take that under consideration.
Okay. And then, uh, this time limit estimate, what is the estimated value of construction? I mean, this is whatever the general contractor lists on, on the, on the building permit?
And it's, uh, subject to the building official's review.
Okay. I mean, I know it's, you know, very common practice to round down quite a bit, because that translates into the property tax bill eventually.
Right.
So, you know, in any event, the numbers will be rather low, I would imagine. When, you know, it's kind of an interesting thing, this almost creates an incentive for them to round up, but that, that's kind of a, that'll be an uncomfortable tension for everyone when they fill out their, uh, building permit, um, application. We should be aware of that, because that's actually, um, you know, that will be uncomfortable for every applicant. We should just be aware of that.
If this were to go into effect at a given time, would people who have already pulled their permits and started construction fall under this, or would there be a grace period and start sometime after, you know, make them immune to it?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, their time period would start from the date this ordinance is passed. So, uh, even if they've already had a permit open for longer than their time period, uh, prescribes based on the value, that time period would begin the day the ordinance passed.
That's, I think, the only fair way to do it.
Sure.
Yeah.
Following up on Commissioner Dugan's thought about applying this only to commercial, I can imagine a home remodel that was exterior, that became extended, uh, could, could bother the neighbors, but in an entirely interior remodel, a bathroom remodel or something, seems to me that maybe not needed to be in scope of, of this sort of rule. So, maybe just applying it for permits that have exterior impact is a thought.
Sure. And just to clarify, um, the building official specified to me that, uh, almost all, uh, minor renovations are completed with a year, and almost all major renovations are completed within two years. So there are still some projects that fall outside that timeline.
But I guess we don't have information on whether they impact the neighbors or not, or whether we receive complaints about them or not.
Correct.
And so we're not sure if we're solving a real problem with that.
Sure.
Can you say, uh, does the scope of complete, um, include the, the restoration of sidewalk and street, and any, you know, any city property required by the permit? Or put differently, I would not, uh, want a circumstance where everything but, uh, sort of the city property is taken care of, and then that dribbles on, so to speak. I would want to make sure that done, and the amount of time allowed to be done includes the full scope of, uh, what is required under the pulling the permit.
Right. As, as of right now, it is not specified in the ordinance, but we can.
Yeah, you might, you might want to think about how, how to work that in, so it is unambiguous.
But one consequence of this rule might be for people to, um, scope their projects in phases, one permit at a time sequentially. And so, that could have impact on, um, how the, um, building department conducts this business, and, uh, so instead, so instead of risking running out of time, why not just pull a permit for, I don't know, for subset, um, if that's possible, but.
Sure, that's valid concern.
Something to think through, if there, we, we, undesirable impact.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. We do have a speaker card, so we'll open up to a public comment. Uh, Zenvoi Fitchenhold, if I got that close? Okay, thank you.
I, you want to come, I listened to part of the discussion. Okay, I was sorry, I was late, but I agree with a lot of your comments. Okay, first of all, uh, it, it has to apply, starting, to all future projects, starting when the ordinance will be adopted, okay? Second, I agree with you that it has to be, the penalties have to be proportional to the value of the project, or to the cost of the project, that you, you have to decide. It cannot be like 2, 3, 4,000 dollars, okay? We are very much concerned, a lot of neighbors are concerned, with the upcoming Walnut projects, with the upcoming Dragonfly V, the Black Mountain project. If that goes on forever, okay? The Black Mountain project, uh, is going to be a $120 million project. For them, 30,000, 300, 300,000 dollars a year is nothing, okay? So, if we're going to adopt a ordinance, it has to have teeth, okay? And by the way, is this considered a commercial or residential, uh, like, uh, the, uh, Black Mountain project? Is it, what, what is it, what is it considered, commercial or residential?
It would be considered residential, I believe.
That means it has to apply for both residential and commercial, okay? Now, the fact that people don't complain doesn't mean that people don't have a problem with it, okay? People don't want to waste your time. If there is no ordinance, what are there to complain about, okay? So we're always waiting for the moment where somebody will bring up the issue, and put it at the ordinance, make it a law. Then you can complain the law is not being respected. But otherwise, who is going to complain waste time, his or yours? Okay, so, so don't take the signal that there's no complaints, as there's no problem, okay?
We would rather hear about the, uh, concerns before it goes into effect, like you're doing this evening, is the best way.
Well, but we were waiting until this actually is on the table, okay? So that, uh, that's something to, to be discussed, and we trust that you will make the right decision, and that will positively affect the entire, you know, the entire city, okay? Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. And that is what we try to do every time we sit here. Very good. Anyone else care to speak on this matter? With that, we'll, uh, close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion, or all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
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 Any news? Hearing none, uh, public hearing is closed. We may now discuss this as a commission.
Well, I'll start by, by saying that certainly we've heard, uh, the negative impact of projects that are unduly prolonged, that we definitely want, like, I, I would definitely support, rules such as these to, um, to discourage that from happening. So, definitely like the concept. I think it could use some fine tuning, as we've already discussed. And the, um, the final consideration I wanted to raise is, if, if the, in times of good economy, it's fairly easy to plan and to complete projects, but if we were to, um, have a, uh, a sharp economic downturn, then there could be an impact on construction. And then this could, um, especially if we scale the, scale the, the fines, so I'm just wondering, um, if there's anything, I'm trying to think, um, how the law would, um, impact our, our community, uh, under a variety of circumstances. And so in a, in a, uh, boom time right, right now, may be quite a bit different than, um, than a sharp downturn, when, when it can be hard to get something, hard to get work completed. It's another, another thought.
Yeah, I appreciate that thought. I guess, question for, for Jeremy. So what, what does happen if someone just, they can't complete the project? You know, uh, economic downturn, they run out of money, the contractor is terrible, it just becomes a nightmare, and they're like, I can't get this thing done. We just sit there and charge 200 dollars a day until, you know, we grind them into the ground? Is that, is that what would happen here?
Well, so the last section is, uh, declaring it a public nuisance, if, uh, the project is incomplete. So, we can, uh, create monetary penalties and enforce those, uh, via civil action, or, uh, force them to abate the nuisance in a different way. Oh, sorry. Oh, I was going to say, the penalties can keep racking up, but the city has alternate means to enforce this ordinance.
I see, but when does discretion come back into it? I mean, and, you know, um, you know, I, I get a thousand dollars a day if we have a Cherry Street, and the developer is just choosing to build his San Francisco projects first, but what is, you know, this homeowner who, you know, his contractor turned out to be a fraud or something, and, you know, like, where, where can we, you know, make this human again, and address someone's actual situation on the ground without just sending out thousand-dollar-a-day fine tickets that no one could really probably pay after a couple of months?
Well, as far as the, let's say a homeowner were ripped off by a contractor, there is, uh, some room for, uh, I believe in the proposed ordinance, the city manager has the power to, uh, grant them an extension. And, uh, that would probably qualify for an extension.
Or the appeals process, perhaps?
The appeals process would be another route for that as well.
And maybe this is covered by the same appeals process. You can imagine that, um, in a failed project, the property might be conveyed to a new owner or new developer, and one of the things that, that they will want certainty around is what liability for paying fines comes along with the project, uh, because, you know, I'm not going to take over and pick up something that someone else failed on without knowing, do I owe 360,000 dollars? Or is the slate wiped clean? Or, or how do I negotiate that into my deal?
There, a lien, one of the options for declaring a nuisance is, a lien would be put on the property for the amount of money owed, and that would notify future buyers.
I, yes, okay, good, thank you. You can imagine the, the circumstance where that lien might be the reason that the project stays unfinished. So, uh, you know, we can't imagine every circumstance, it just seems wise for council as they're thinking about a, a new ordinance to give the city manager the, the right set of escape valves. I think that's what my colleagues were suggesting as well. You got to have an out, because you can't predict it all.
Sure.
I support that idea also, that, that's a good idea.
It's a, it's a challenge to get the right balance between, um, prompting the behavior we'd like, and, um, and also being reasonable, or not having, um, undesirable consequences for the community. And perhaps benefiting from our neighboring communities that have had such rules, first, a survey as to what are the, you know, what worked and what didn't work, um, could be a nice way to, um, make sure we're not, uh, stepping into any holes here.
Sure.
Yeah, it sounds like we canvassed our neighbors, but did we talk to their staff to see how it's working? Any lessons learned? Any changes they would make?
So far, we've just looked into who actually has these ordinances. We have not looked into the effect of the ordinances yet.
Okay. I mean, that seems like, with a couple of phone calls, you could probably get, you know, several decades of wisdom back. And then, how would this apply to a major development, like a Black Mountain planned development? You know, I think that specifically, you know, projects of that size are the ones I think we most want control over, but, you know, no one's going to build 120 houses in even 36 months. So, you know, is, is basically a planned development just become, comes its own regime and isn't even subject to this? Or how does that, how would that work?
Well, right, as a, as the ordinance currently stands, it would just fall into the 10 million dollar plus category, assuming, uh, I, I would assume that 122-unit, uh, project would cost at least that much. But, um, that we can certainly add categories, add discretion to the city manager, or, uh, some city official, uh, because you're right, it is, it's difficult to create a one-size-fits-all solution for this.
Well, I, I think it would probably just become part of the process of, you know, scoping a project where staff would be like, okay, we'll give you four years on this, or something, as part of the planned development type process. I'm not sure how that, um, would be administered exactly, but I think that'll be important.
Okay.
One way that might be, uh, successful is phasing the project. I live in a condominium homeowner association with several hundred units, and there are four phases, they were built at different times. The last phase is different architecturally, but, uh, it was, it was phased out over several years.
May already be some phasing. I mean, we've, we've seen grading, applications for grading, uh, precede the, uh, the actual home, uh, the home designs, so, um...
One way to look at, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
One way to look at it might be with infrastructure. If, if power, sewer, water is not at the site, and, and infrastructure needs to come in, uh, that could get to the phasing issue, and that, that in and of itself, just bringing in the infrastructure, could be 18 months on, on a very large project. And maybe that's separate, or maybe that's part of this phasing that you're talking about, yeah?
It would, it would probably be nice to be able to articulate how, how this rule would apply to a larger project, because that's going to be of interest to a lot of people. And if we set an expectation that, uh, it's going to be done in two years, or else, and then it turns out that, well, that two years actually started one and a half years after the road construction began, because that's when they pull the house permits or something. So having, uh, being able to articulate how it would work for a large project, um, would be, uh, would be valuable to set expectations.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with that. I mean, in fact, that might be the very problem we're trying to solve here. I mean, in fact, that might be the very problem we're trying to solve here. So, it would just seem to me oversight not to explicitly solve it. And kind of on that same vein, I'd be interested in how my fellow commissioners feel about this, but I always hesitate to try to solve problems that haven't presented themselves yet, and I haven't heard, or, you know, I haven't heard in this presentation, and I haven't heard elsewhere that there is major concern over smaller residential-type projects. So, I think building a regime like this is a good stepping stone. I'm not sure we have to solve the entire range of potentialities here, so I'm inclined to draw the line on this table of time limits at $1 million-plus. And, you know, we can wait and see if these smaller projects actually are a real problem that we do need to change how we operate as a city, or maybe in the next study session or what have you, we'll have more evidence that it is a problem. But without an understanding that we're actually solving a problem, I don't like laying down, you know, what could be a fairly onerous regime, and would certainly cause people some consternation when they're trying to figure out what the value of this project is, 'cause we all know those things are hard to predict at the beginning of a project anyways. So, I guess I would, and I understand things like Black Mountain are residential, and we can have major residential projects, but I think the problem we're trying to solve are major projects, and it would seem rational to draw the line at $1 million and up, if not higher, but interested in other people's reaction to that.
That's an idea, or you could give the lower end of the range 24 months. You know, everybody gets 24 months up until $5 million, and, and that includes the little guys. That's another, I like your idea, there may be a couple of different ways to get to that.
My, one of the reactions I had was thinking about a, let's call it a self-constructed project. So, you know, I'm relatively handy, I rely on friends and summer vaca, or winter vacations and spare time to complete a project, and I've got an addition going on in my backyard for 18 months. And it seems to me that that is not in the spirit of getting in, getting your permit, getting it done, and getting out. And so, therefore, I would personally favor and recommend council, think about maybe extending the residential from nine months to 15 months or something, and build in a bigger cushion rather than exclude it as a project. I mean, what we're, again, what we're trying to do is just make it clear, the city expects good neighbors' projects to get started and done, and so, therefore, personally, I would include it. But I do respect this notion of nine months may be a little short, and why tag the homeowner with $9,000 to get the extra six months?
I agree with that, but I think I'd, I'd set residential at one year, 12 months. Seems reasonable.
I guess I would ask, are we aware of smaller residential projects creating a problem that we're trying to solve here? Is anyone aware?
Well, there's a problem for the developer, perhaps, but also for the neighbors who have to endure the noise and dirt and parking problems for months and months, sometimes years and years. I think that's why we need an ordinance like this, to avoid that, to a large extent.
I was just wondering if we had actual examples of, of it being a problem? 'Cause I, you know, I appreciate the observation that someone doing their own project, it might take them a while, but I don't think anyone's really impacted by someone working in their backyard for even three years on adding a room, or, you know, or their own bathroom, or what it might be. I don't know how to carve that out, except perhaps that would be under a certain amount.
When I said one year for residential, I meant new construction, where a house is replaced or built on what little vacant land we have left in the city. Certainly not large projects, but individual houses. Try to get them finished in a year. To not exacerbate the problems of parking and noise and, and dirt.
If a project is, knows they're running up against the deadline, they still have to comply with the construction ordinance regarding noise. They can't speed up and start working evenings and Sundays so that they get done before the $200 a day penalty kicks in.
That's correct. This doesn't carve out an exception.
But certainly creates a strong incentive if someone's coming up against the deadline.
Although, the current rules allow work on Sundays. Right? I think it, the hours are less, but they're, they're Sunday work.
Thank you. So, there might be a little more of that, if there's...
So, there, there is some room to go beyond Monday through Friday. Whether that's what the neighbor wants or not, I don't know, that...
I guess that, you know, the choice is, do I get the thing done and put up with weekend noise where I didn't have it, or does it go on another six months? I mean, it seems to me that, you know, there's a, we've hit on a, a range of, of good bits of input, pieces of input for, for staff. Can, maybe Lisa, what, what else is being asked of us this evening beyond kind of this round of input?
The council directed staff to hold a study session with the commission before anything would be brought back for them for consideration, so really, it's just an opportunity to have a conversation here this evening, and see if you, what kind of inputs or thoughts you would like to advance forward for the council when they consider this type of ordinance.
And Lisa, will, will we see this again, or this is our, our one bit of input, and then it goes to council?
So, the city attorney and I were just talking, the schedules and what's coming up on the agenda, and I did provide you a handout we can, I can touch on later. But the, the, the schedule is that staff would bring back something to the council. I think it was March, March 16th. So, there may be an opportunity, if the commission would like, you know, perhaps, you know, the comments that were, that were presented here this evening can be folded into a proposal that the city council would consider, and we could bring that back to the commission if you would like to see it before it goes to the council, schedule permitting. But I, I think we have some room, let's see, I think, yeah, it would really probably only be March 2nd, which I guess we can, could do, again, because the planning commission's not taking action on it, it doesn't require notice, so...
I think it's actually the night that I think it was gonna be...
Oh, March 9th? Yeah, so then we could bring it back on March 2nd. And again, because it's not formal action, you know, it's not required to be noticed.
Okay. I, I think it would be good for us to see it one more time and cycle that, if, if that will work into the staff's workload. That said, I do think it'd be beneficial, I think, if we could be a bit more specific with our consensus here. My thought was, we should solve the problem at hand, which seemed to be larger projects taking a long time. I don't know if there was a consensus on drawing the line at $1 million. I also heard just 24 months being the length of time allowed for any project as a minimum, and then scaling as we get above 5 million and 10 million. Is there, do other commissioners wanna weigh in on that? If we could coalesce around one of those ideas?
Yeah. And I'd like to see residential projects, single residential projects at 24 months, or 12, 12 months, one year.
Rather than the nine?
Yes.
As opposed, yeah, I would, I would support that. For my part, I would not waive under a million, and, yeah, I would agree with 12 months.
I would tend to agree with Commissioner Dugan in that it'd be nice to scale this to address the larger projects that have the greatest impact on the community. I do realize there, there's a potential for a smaller-scale, long-term construction to have an impact, but, and so maybe you don't wanna let them out of the net entirely, but to scale, when you're, when you're scaling the, the fee structure or the thresholds to, to emphasize the, the larger projects of more than, more than $1 million.
Yeah, I agree with that, wherever, so it sounds like we don't really have a consensus around how to handle the time limits, except I think we're all in agreement that there shouldn't be a nine-month limit, a 12-month limit at least. I believe we also have a consensus that both the completion penalties and the, and I'm not sure we've talked about this, but I would also propose that the extension fees also scale with the size of the project. I just think, you know, both of these tables seem onerous if you're a single-family resident and doing a minor addition, but these seem inconsequential if you're a significant developer doing a significant project. So, I, I think both of those should scale. Do we have consensus around that?
I agree.
I agree.
Yes.
Another question, would these apply for the accessory dwelling unit constructions? Because there's a whole bunch of state rules on, on cities not impeding those.
If they meet certain requirements, this probably would not apply. However, if, because they have to be ministerially approved within 60 days. But if they fall outside of the state mandated approval process, then this, this should apply.
I think the state mandate applies to approving the project and giving it a go-ahead. I'm not sure it covers the length of time it takes to construct the unit.
I wouldn't think so, but I just wouldn't wanna have our rule conflict with...
Yeah. Point well taken.
Through the chair, the only other, just, just offer or scenario that I would present is that sometimes, and we have seen this, is where a brand-new house will be built in conjunction with a brand-new ADU. And under that scenario, the state does not require that the ADU be entitled within 60 days. It would run the normal course of review, because it's being, you know, built in conjunction with a brand-new home, it gets reviewed under the normal, under the entitlement process for the main house, because they go together. So, I guess in that scenario, potentially, I mean, you could consider that if you're looking at brand-new, single-family homes, there could be the potential where an ADU is sort of, kind of gathered up in that particular scenario as well.
Another suggestion is that currently, the rules are that you have to have discernible progress, which is done, which is shown by having an inspection. I think, once you have an inspection, then the six-month timer resets, and that seems like a reasonable, I wouldn't want to replace that. I mean, that seems like a reasonable thing to have, and to maintain a discernible progress timer.
Can, can you elaborate? I, I think I agree, but could you just say it maybe a different way?
It's, my experience is, when you pull a permit, it, it's good for six, six months, and then if you have an inspection, then that, the timer resets, and it's good for six months from that time of that intermediate inspection. So, along the way, there's inspections that are need to be done, and that resets the timer. And that's why you could have a project go on, your permit can stay active for a long period of time, is because you're, you're, there's discernible progress. So, that's already built into our rules, and I'm, I'm suggesting we wouldn't need to eliminate that mechanism with this, but to keep it, keep those.
But I don't think that would have any impact on when these fees come in and such.
Right, I don't think so. I think it, they could just exist in, at the same time, that both...
I see. I would also like to see if there might be consensus around when these time limits start. I do not wanna create additional staff complexity around determining when construction actually starts, but then again, I actually, it can be, as, I believe when you're developing property, when that permit gets stamped, you're not quite sure, because there can always be another round of permit comment. So, you know, the day just comes, hey, they just approved it, no further comments, and now you can construct. Well, the, the next month at a minimum is called mobilization, and that's how long it takes your contractor to actually get everything lined up, because he can't start doing that until he knows it's stamped. So, 12 months, if you chew up 60 days of that mobilizing, you know, that leaves you 10 months to get it done before you're now having to file for extensions, et cetera. So, I would, you know, given, I don't think we have a clear way to determine when construction actually starts, I think the time limit for all of this should allow for a 60-day mobilization grace period. Just curious reactions to that.
You know, maybe I'd, I'd suggest we actually ask staff to, assuming we do hear this again, to hear from the building department and have them make a recommendation. I mean, they're the experts, they have to enforce it, they have to live with it, and they have the experience, as you say, so let's let them weigh in.
So, it sounds like we might have a consensus on a mobilization grace period. We just need some input on how long that should be, to be fair.
Better.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, is there an option to just not pull the permits until you're ready to go?
Yeah, that's always an option.
So, in which case, can I determine my own clock by when I pull the permits?
Yes.
So, I think, you know, as a developer, a builder, a homeowner, I don't know, maybe that's not realistic. I, again, that's why I just need some input from the, the city on...
I don't think it works that way.
I think there, I mean, there is some time that someone could wait, but they're at risk of a change in the building code or change in the rules, because your entitlement to a project is generally from the building permit issue, so you, most builders wanna get their building permit as soon as possible, so they lock in their, their project approvals.
Yeah. It would be useful to understand what the time range is, the distribution of, from request for a permit to granting of the permit. Is that something that varies between one week and six months? So, when I'm filing for my permit, I don't know. So when I'm filing for my permit, I don't know. So what, what the range of, of application to granting of the permits is because that could be problematic to arrange for the, the construction crew if you're not sure when the permit's going to be available. And so in a fixed grace period, kind of gets at the problem, but doesn't, I like Commissioner Iacopone's thought that having, if it's on the, on the permit holders, to put in a date as for the start, then that solves the problem of how do you say what the start date is, when construction started. Really, we'd like to have it start when construction starts, but that's hard to define. But if, so if they have to register the date with the city in some way, I don't know if that, that could be a way to.
Yeah, no, I like that thought. You know, they could pick a date and they just, you know, they can't be, no construction activities until they, you know, their permit could be approved, but they say we, we're going to start in 45 days, and they can't be mobilized on the ground until then. I, that, I think that's a good idea.
So some activation, but the, if, if the zoning laws change, I mean, yeah, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of complexities here.
Well, I, I think they would have already picked up their permit, but they just haven't recorded a date that they're going to start construction. It's just an option, but I, I agree with Commissioner Iacopone that, you know, let's hear what the building commission, or the building department recommends. Great, Jeremy, has, has our guidance been clear? Any questions of what we've thrown at you?
No, it sounds like you have a lot of suggestions, and I'll, I'll look into that and I'll consult with the building department. Sounds like that should probably be the first thing to happen.
Okay. Commissioners, anything else we want to?
I appreciate your work.
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to, to have us weigh in and, and create an opportunity for the public to become aware that this is cooking. I think it's pretty wise on the city council's part to, to put this out there, let it develop. So it's a good, it's a good precedent for, for letting, letting the community build, build input and interest in something.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Great. All right. That was just a study action, so a study session, so no formal action. So now we'll move on to receive a presentation on the Housing Element Annual Progress Report for 2019.
Thank you, Chair Dugan. I will be making this presentation this evening. Again, Lisa Porras, Planning Manager for the City of San Carlos's Planning Division. And so what is before you tonight? There's no action. This is a data gathering, fact-finding mission, objective information type of report. The item before you is a brief summary of the city's progress in meeting the Housing Element actions, programs, policies, and goals, and in particular, the progress towards the city's regional housing needs allocation, or RENA. So this report that is before you this evening is for the calendar year 2019. And actually, I think this is the first time that we've presented it to the Planning Commission, at least for the last couple of years. It's something that normally goes straight to the city councils as a consent item. They can pull it, we can discuss it. But this is a requirement that sets, that is set forth by the State of California Department of Housing and Community Development whereby they require every city and county to do an annual report on the progress of the housing element. So the housing element that we are looking at is a housing element for the period between 2015 and 2023. So we're actually in the fifth year of our reporting period for this particular plan. The housing element was adopted, let's see, in May 2015. And just to sort of back up, and I, I think some of the commission is aware, but there is a requirement that is set forth by the State Department of Housing, Housing and Community Development, which is that every city and county must plan for housing needs. And so for the past 50 years, every city and county has been required to prepare a plan to meet housing needs for its particular jurisdiction. Again, we, this report is actually due on April the 1st. So shortly after this meeting this evening, we will be making our way onto the city council to provide a report as well. So over the past couple of years, the reporting requirements have changed. Typically, what we used to do in the past is we look at the number of building permits that were issued. So the state requires that, at least when we look at the city's progress towards meeting the RENA, what we actually count are building permits issued for new housing, for net new housing. But because the housing situation in California has grown to be more of a challenge, as we're all familiar with, they have presented us with additional data to collect and present to them. And so in your packet as part of the attachment, when you see those spreadsheets and different worksheets, these are all worksheets that are, they're templates provided by the state. So we don't alter those, we can't change those, we have to fill them out exactly as the state has presented them to us. So I just wanted to give a little bit of background there. But what, some of the new information that they're asking us to complete is how many applications have we received? I mentioned before that we really were interested in tracking the building permits issued, but now they're interested in kind of watching the overall progress of housing development in the city, really wanting to know how many development applications were submitted and deemed, deemed complete in the reporting year. Item number two is actually what I mentioned before, it's the number of permits issued. Item number three is essentially the same, which is our progress towards meeting our regional housing needs allocation. The other thing that they want to know is whether or not we have fulfilled any prior requirement to rezone sites to meet our needs. Now, when our housing element was last updated and certified by the state, we were able to meet all of our needs with the pre-existing zoning in place. So item number four is, is not really applicable to San Carlos specifically. The next area of reporting is just how are we doing on implementing our programs or action items within the housing element? There's about 40-something different action items within the housing element. This is the last part of the attachment. And so they're really just, you know, kind of wanting to see how these are working out. Most of them are ongoing, things that we do on an annual basis anyway, but that is a requirement of the report. And then number six doesn't really apply to the city. This has to do with commercial development bonuses that have been approved, and our city hasn't really, hasn't had any of those. And then finally, the state is interested in knowing have rehabilitated, preserved, or acquired any, any sites for housing or low-income housing, and there has been none for this particular reporting year. So next, I just would like to sort of dive a little bit into some of the details in terms of housing applications received and deemed complete, as well as the building activity. So this slide here for the reporting year, which is January 1, 2019 through the end of the year 2019, we received a total of 37 housing applications that were submitted. Of these housing applications, there were a total of 93 units within those applications proposed to be built. Of those 93, there were a handful that consisted of single-family dwelling units, and a lot of these are scrapes and rebuild. We don't really see a lot of net new. However, as you're all familiar with, the VIV or Black Mountain proposal, this is a significant amount of net new, single-family that we don't usually see, but that'll be coming forth in a, in a, in a prior, excuse me, in a subsequent report. So most of the single-family are scrapes and rebuild. We have been getting net new units by way of accessory dwelling units. We had 23 new units of very low, at very low income levels from 817 Walnut, another 24 net new units of 560 El Camino Real, and then a smaller mixed-use project of eight units at 1240 El Camino Real. And again, these are not falling within the building permits issued, they've just been submitted or deemed complete within the 2019 reporting year. As far as building activity goes, the number of building permits that were issued resolved in a total of 55 new units. Of those 55 new units, because we have scrapes and rebuild and replacing, you know, maybe one unit with a larger amount of units, there's really been a net new unit, units added to the city in an amount of 43. So this slide here just shows our breakdown of our RENA allocation. So when the last housing element was updated, the RENA allocation that the city received at the time was 596 units. This means that San Carlos needed to show that its zoning could, could accommodate at least 596 units, and the state further mandated that we look at that total amount into four basic levels of affordability over the course of eight years. So in the very low-income category, our numbers are 195 new units in the low, 107 in moderate, 111, and above moderate, 183. And I will share that the trend has leaned toward higher numbers in the below-market-rate categories. The above moderate, as you can see, is only 183. If we were to add up the remaining numbers, you can see a majority of the need is in the affordability level. For the 2019 calendar year, a total of 43 net new units were, will be constructed where building permits were issued. One was in the low-income category, two were in the moderate, and then 40 in the above-moderate category.
And Lisa, just, so that's net new, you just said that.
Correct.
But I just want to make sure I understand that. So basically, in this regime, we get, the scrape and rebuilds are just not even considered?
Correct.
Okay.
Because when we're, when we, in order to meet the RENA, we're only counting net new because this, these are new units that the city needs to provide in order to meet the housing needs.
Got it. I like that Walnut project, I think they're going to take out like eight units and add 40, so that'll be like 32 net new.
Correct.
Okay.
That's how we would report it in the upcoming year. And in fact, building permits are anticipated to be issued this calendar year for that project. So in next year's report, we'd be able to account for those, for those units.
Got it.
Yeah. And so this next slide is just really, and this is included in your staff report, provides our overall RENA progress to date with the current reporting year circled below, excuse me, circled on the slide in red. So you can sort of see the progress beginning in 2015 and then up until this particular year. In the year 2016, you'll notice a very large increase in the number of net new units, which really resulted from Transit Village and, and the Wheeler Plaza project. But the remaining years have typically been, and this is, and this is pretty average for our city, in, you know, anywhere between 20, 30, 40, 40 net new units each calendar year. So if we look at the overall number of units, new units that the city has issued building permits for, it's quite high. It's the second to the last column. You can see we've issued, we've provided for 523 of the total 596 units that has been our allocation set forth by the state. But majority of those numbers have been in the above-moderate category. And I know the commission has been, you know, looking at how, how the current BMR works, and this year we will be updating our BMR ordinance, but it remains to be quite challenging to meet the numbers in the very low, low and moderate income categories. In the above-moderate category, we've actually permitted 308 more than we, than we actually needed, at least needed under RENA in that particular income category. So overall, the remaining need for the, for this particular housing element cycle and then the below-market-rate housing categories is the 381 unit figure.
And, and we have to, like, is that right? We get no credit in this regime for the 308 units we built above our mandate for non-affordable housing?
No, there's no, it's not like a credit that you can carry over to the next year. It's, it's just at minimum, this is what the state allocated to our city in order to meet the overall need. And again, the trend has been really increasing the numbers in the below-market-rate category, affordability levels, the very low, low and moderate.
I see. And that's because, the state's doing that because basically the BMR, that's our policy. We get to create that, and obviously, our current policy is not achieving very low and low standards. Is that the right, you know, like, by evidence, our current regime isn't going to meet the state mandate, but it's our regime, so that's why, you know, the, we presented in this way and we get no credit for this extra 300 units that we had built?
That is correct. However, you're probably familiar with some of the recent adjustments or modifications that have been made to the below-market-rate housing ordinance, one of which is when the city council basically is not accepting any in lieu fees. They really want the units where they were required, they want them built within the project. So that was one change. The other change that we were now, that we are now legally able to do, where we weren't allowed to do before, was require rental development projects to provide affordable units. There was a prior court case which prevented cities from requiring rentals, large, you know, apartment projects from, they were basically exempt from the below-market, from the BMR ordinance. But that decision has been reversed, so now cities can require rental projects to be subject to the BMR ordinance. It was previously only ownership projects could do that. And so that's one of the things that the city will be looking at a lot more closely, is diving into some of the details on the BMR ordinance and looking at, you know, when it's triggered. Right now, it's triggered at seven units or more. It's the breakdown between moderate and low percentages that are driven directly by how the ordinance is currently written, as well as the overall percentage requirement. I think we've mentioned before that some other cities require more, our cities require 15%. So that's something that we're going to be taking a look at and bringing, and working on this year, which would come before the planning commission as it is within the zoning ordinance. So in that context, the planning commission would be making a recommendation to the city council on the BMR ordinance. The other area that we need to, to sort of provide any update on is again, the number of actions. There's a total of about 45 actions within the current housing element plan. And they center on, you know, how we can promote the preservation of existing units, you know, what programs we have in place for rehabilitation, programs to make our homes more energy efficient, looking at how we can encourage housing, majority of our housing to take place close to transit, actions for promoting second units or accessory dwelling units, what can we do in assisting the development, to assist in the development of affordable housing, and removing any governmental constraints. So a large, a large part of what that involves is taking a look at our zoning, is, and are there any constraints to the production of housing, and how can we remove them, as well as a specific requirement for special needs population. There's, again, the 45 programs are provided in your packet, but some of the highlights that, for this year, will be that we are working on updating the second dwelling unit ordinance or accessory dwelling unit ordinance. As I mentioned just a moment ago, we're going to be working on our below-market-rate housing ordinance and updating that. And then, this has been a priority for the council for the last couple of years, and that involves, you know, one of what's referred to as their strategic objectives, and you may know that the council meets on an annual basis to set forth some of the priorities that they'd like to see the city working on. And you'll remember that the first time that we And you'll remember that the first time that we had mini retreats with some of the committees and commission was late last year, where we talk, where we took, where we had a mini retreat here with the commission and took forward a lot of the commission's ideas and considerations forward to the city council. But having said that, what remains to be one of their top priorities is how can we look at land use and other regulations and development standards to increase all types of housing? And what that is going to ultimately give rise to is a focused general plan update. Now, one of the things that is coming up is a housing element update, and that will be for the year 2023 to 2031. So by state law, housing elements are required to be updated every eight years. So we're sort of in a position where we need to do that anyway, but the council's objective for looking at our land use element, our land use element within the general plan and zoning, to see what can we do with the existing areas that are zoned residential and how could we maximize housing opportunities? So essentially, what that's going to do is give rise to a general plan update that we will probably start working on sometime this year in order to follow that direction given by the city council, but also in anticipation of the housing element update that's required anyways by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. So these are three pretty significant work tasks that we have before us in, in regards to how do we, you know, increase housing opportunities within our city in particular? To sort of follow along those lines, the next housing element update is due in January 2023, and that again, will cover the period between 2023 and 2031. So what's happening right now is that the state is about to issue the total number of housing units that the nine county Bay Area should be planning for as part of the next housing element update. And what we know is that the numbers are significantly higher than they have been in previous years. So this is something that we anticipate, they could potentially double. Again, the total number will be coming out this year in April. And so there's a process by how these numbers are essentially handed down to each city along the way. In April, we'll get the total number for the nine county Bay Area. By September of this year, there is a committee, and committees within ABAG, our Regional Council of Governments, the Association of Bay Area Governments, that's going to be working on a methodology for how that total number gets divided into each of the counties. And then the county will basically set, will allocate a number for each city. So, you know, in a little less than a year from now, we will be getting draft numbers for our city in particular. As with everything, you might imagine, there is an appeal process. So if, if the city wanted to appeal those numbers, the city could choose to do so. But the overall finer, final number for our city will be given in July 2021, and then the housing element is actually due by January 15 of 2023. And because those numbers, we anticipate to be significantly higher again, and this is all within the context of the housing situation in the entire state, it really sort of sets the groundwork for the city council objective that has already been, you know, that we've been directed to work on, is to really kind of look at the general plan, land use and zoning, and see where we'll be able to increase housing opportunities. So that's a little bit more than I would normally be presenting, you know, rather than just here's the building permits issued, here's our progress on RENA. But because this is a significant issue in our city, I wanted to provide the commission with an update on, on where staff is currently at with this work, and, and you'll be hearing a lot more about it. This is just an initial, kind of like a brief summary, but the overall general plan update and zoning updating, housing element update are all projects that would be coming to the planning commission eventually. And there's a lot of work in between now and that point, so there'll be study sessions, community workshops. As soon as we have a work program more developed, staff can come back and bring a, provide a presentation to the planning commission, so you'll have a better understanding of what's exactly going to take place when, and we'll keep you informed along the way. So this concludes my presentation. Aside from the next immediate step, at least with the annual housing element progress report, we will be going to city council on March 2 to basically provide them with the same information in terms of how many building permits issued, were issued in the reporting year, as well as how many planning applications were received. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have this evening, but that is the summary of my presentation. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you, Lisa. That's just a good overview. I, you know, was aware of RENA and, and, you know, the objectives, but wasn't aware of where we were at on, on our progress. Do we have any resources to see how we're benchmarked against our neighboring communities?
Not at this moment, at least not for the reporting year, but this is something that the state keeps track of, and I believe there are several reports issued, but that's something that we can certainly bring back, at least within San Mateo County, within the cities in San Mateo County, just to kind of see where everyone's at in meeting the RENA. But if we're feeling a little bit sort of concerned that we're not meeting our below market rate numbers, I can say that a lot of cities are in the same position with respect to the below market rate numbers.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I certainly would like to see, you know, a general benchmarking in San Mateo County, just to better understand where we're at. And then, what, what is the impact of this? I mean, is it just the state shames us, or are there specific sticks involved if we continue to not meet objectives?
Well, it, I'll have to check on housing element law, but I don't think there's, I'll have to double check, but in, in, in prior years, there really isn't any penalty for not meeting the numbers, because the numbers are really driven by the market. We are not developers. We don't go out and construct these units. It's really about, are we setting the right environment for it to occur? Are we making sure that we're not unduly constraining housing development in our city? Do we have the zoning at the right densities to accommodate the need? Are our standards, you know, we can say, for example, are our parking standards constraining or, or presenting a situation where it's hard to meet the maximum densities? Is it our open space standard? So it's the, we can, we can take a, you know, deep dive into all of our standards and, and look to see, you know, is there any one of these standards that is making it harder to meet the maximum densities that are allowed by zoning? So that's something that we are going to be looking at going forward in that focused general plan update, looking at all of our standards and see what we may need to do to adjust it, to make sure that we're not, you know, inadvertently suppressing the maximum densities that are already outlined in our land use and zoning, as an example.
Got it. No, thank you for that. Very helpful.
You know, I found the, the gap sobering. And, you know, when you look at the progress 2017, 18, and 19, it's also sobering. All of the progress toward our goals came in 16. And, you know, anybody can do this math, but out of 523 units, 6% were below market or below above moderate. And, you know, if you wanted to get, just by simple mathematics, if you wanted to get to 308, you'd need 5,000 units built. Not even Redwood City with all of its residential construction is going to hit that. So I think clearly something has to give, and then build onto that Lisa's comment about these targets may double. It's not exactly clear to what end doubling a target does, other than stretches the rubber band even further. But maybe, maybe to build on John, on your question, the, if any individual community has had more success, and again, let's check Redwood City, that would appear to have built 1,000 units in the past couple of years, have they done any better than 6%? And if so, how? What could we learn from that? So it's not clear whether they, whether they have or not, but it, again, it was just sobering, looking at the data that you, was presented in staff report. So thank you for sharing.
One of the things I just remembered, and forgive me, because there's been so many new housing laws that have been passed in, in the last couple of years, and then of course, last year as well. You asked about, are there any sort of penalties, if you will, if cities don't, you know, meet their regional housing needs allocation in the low income categories? And I will say that there was a new law that essentially will give a very fast track process. A city only ha, a city would only have so much time to review a project, and the city would only be able to apply what are called objective standards. So as you might imagine, in zoning, our standards are very objective. You know, here's the setback, here's the height, here's the max density. But what tends to be a little bit more challenging is the overall massing and the fit within the community. So if there's a standard or a design review criteria that potentially makes it difficult for a project to get approved whereby the guideline or criteria is basically written in a way that talks about compatibility and scale and harmony and all those things, those are not really seen as objective standards. So if a city falls behind, under a certain threshold in terms of meeting the below market rate housing numbers, if a developer proposes a project where there's a certain percentage of low income built within it, so it's kind of like a mixed income project, and I don't have the exact thresholds memorized, but essentially, if they provide a certain percentage of low income, then they can be automatically eligible to move forward in, under this fast tracked process whereby the city can only apply objective standards. So basically, what that means is if there was any sort of concern about the project not fitting in or not being in scale, if the city were to deny the project, we could wind up in a potential situation where the state gets involved or, you know, there's legal action taken whereby we're forced to approve the project. So, so the state is really saying that if, if, if you're kind of below a certain threshold, and then a developer comes in and they're providing a mixed income projects with X percentage of below market rate units, they essentially has to be entitled. There's timelines for review, and then again, only subject to objective standards. So that's in one way, kind of a way that the state is trying to get, you know, not have any impediments towards getting these projects approved. So that's a little bit of a long answer, but I, that's sort of a new one out there that I wanted to share.
Got it. No, that's helpful. Yeah, if you're not meeting your standards, you lose your subjective input to a project.
Question, how about ADUs? Won't those count as dwelling units?
Yes, that's a very good question. We do can, get to count our accessory dwelling units in the overall RENA count. One of the things that we would get to do, and we can look at this as part of our next housing element update, if we set sort of like an expectation or a, or set forth an assumption that a certain percentage of our ADUs, and maybe we set those by ADU size, we'll have to take a look at that. But if we set a certain, set forth a certain assumption that a X percentage of ADUs will likely be able to be, to meet the below market rate affordability levels, then we can count those in the lower income categories. But we need to be able to justify it. So that's something, that's some of the work that we want to do in our next housing and element update, is to look to see how we can get those, some of those ADUs as affordable, counting in the affordability categories.
I see. So not formally deeded affordable, like, like a traditional unit, but just the mere fact it's 700 square feet, it will likely command just a low level of rent? Is that the idea?
Exactly.
Yeah, I would just echo my colleague's comment that, yeah, 6%, that's pretty sobering. As a community, we have decided that 15% is the right amount of essential housing in our community, and to look at the prior five years and realize we've achieved 6% where our stated policies are 15%, definitely means we need to revisit this.
I was, I can appreciate that we, in our current plan, we've planned for it, and that there isn't any additional zoning changes that need to be made in order to make this happen. It seems to me that some of these BMR housing developments are a result of public and private partnerships, and I see in the packet that we've been working with 21 elements and different charities housing. And I'm wondering, you know, what are, what are our neighboring cities doing? Are there, is, is this void, which I'm guessing is also being shared by our neighboring cities, enabling the growth of nonprofits that help bring these public-private partnerships to fruition so that more projects can happen?
Yeah, that's a very, you know, good observation here, and I, I think what we can do is probably get under that, under that a little bit more, and we can come back and provide some additional information. Of course, I would like Martin Romo, he probably has more information about that, but that is something that we can definitely, at least kind of research and get a better understanding of as, as we kind of look to see how we compare against some of the other cities and what they've been able to accomplish.
Terrific. Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, great. Moving on, reports, correspondence, and general information. Lisa, any reports on recent city council actions?
Oh, none for this evening. Thank you.
Commission, any comments or reports? Hearing none. Correspondence or other planning staff comments?
I did provide the commission, kind of going back to our mini retreat and some of the requests made by the commission, just a one-page handout about a couple of upcoming items scheduled for the, for, for the planning commission agenda. The planning commission's next meeting will be on March the 2nd, and we have coming forward for the planning commission consideration, a new building at 1091 Industrial. This will be for an R and D use, and the project planner is Lisa Costa-Sanders. We also have coming forward an amendment to an existing use, use permit for the youth center, and Lisa Costa-Sanders will be presenting that as well. And just this evening, we'll add one more, which is, we'll work with the city attorney's office and bring back a more evolved and developed construction time limits ordinance. And then for the second meeting in March, we have two more homes at Winding Way, and you'll remember the Winding Way project, Andrea will be presenting those. 626 Walnut will be ready to come back to the planning commission, as well as a new mixed-use project with ground floor retail and upper story office at 993 Laurel Street, which is on the corner of Laurel and Morse, and the project planner is Sarah Boeb. So we'll have quite a few variety of things to present to the commission in the month of March. And that's it.
Perfect. All right. Thank you. Anything else? Anyone?
It's very useful to get this list.
Yeah, thank you. I definitely appreciate the advanced planning, and I think city council has even been requesting that. Is this, is there some form of planning advance report being delivered to city council? Is this, is there some form of planning advance report being delivered to city council?
There, there may be. I'll need to check with Al on that.
Okay.
You know, we're always getting new things and new ideas coming forward, so I wouldn't be surprised if that's the case.
Okay, sure. I just, I've heard a couple of folks asking for that, but, you know, I'll leave it to them. Terrific. If nothing else, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Good job.